Call this public hearing to order. My name is Derek Bodine. I'm the Director of the Office of Licenseur and Certification. With me is Peter Boswell and Cindy Horn, who are OLC staff and they're going to be assisting here today. Thanks for grading the slush. I know whether it's like it's still slushy or just passed away out there. Thanks for grading that coming up today. A couple of housekeeping points to start with. First of all, in the event that there's an emergency of any kind, fire drill or anything like that, the exits. If you're sitting towards the front of the room on this side, take, go out this door and you'll make a right-hand turn and a left-hand turn and that will take you straight on out the building. If you're towards the back, you go out into the hallway that you came in on and make a right-hand turn over to the end. You'll see the exit down there as well. Restrooms are back out into the elevator lobby and there's public restrooms on either side of the elevator bank. In the event of an evacuation, emergency, a fire or something along those lines, there's your standard fire alarm horn, very loud, very obnoxious, and strobe light. If it's a remain in place emergency such as a tornado or something along those lines, we literally put a jet screen. This is the safe haven room and we'll hear fog alarms and so we'll stay here now. I ask you at this point, if you have electronics, to silence them please. Out of respect for the speakers, they get up. And I also need to announce, because I've heard some discussions already, this is a public hearing for these regulations. This is not a board meeting. The board meeting will begin 12 April in the same room, but this is not a board meeting for a health meeting. So, last December, proposed permanent regulations were signed by Governor McDonald to replace the emergency regulations for the licensure of facilities for five-year-old first trimester abortions per month. These regulations are required by legislation passed by the 2011 session of Virginia Governor and Senator. Emergency regulations now in effect must be replaced by permanent regulations prior to expiration of emergency regulations. We are here to take public comment on the proposed regulations signed by the governor last December. OLC staff will be entertaining questions concerning the proposed regulations during the hearing. The final permanent regulations will be presented to the Board of Health in consideration at the April 12 meeting here in this room. I would process, we will call, based on the order that you've signed in, because there were two signed-in sheets to the speed thing along which you came in, we will alternate working down the list, alternating between your sheets. We will call the speaker and basically the on-deck speaker, the next one up. So to again facilitate and speed along, since everybody has an opportunity to comment today, I would ask that the on-deck person would come up and sit. I highly left an empty chair at the front here. The on-deck should come up and sit up on or stand up on, raise a turn. Each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. The timing clock is projected on the screen behind me so you can gauge your comments to the time as well. If anyone wishes to provide us with written comments so that I can also review that, we'd be happy to take them. The hearing is being transcribed as well as audio recording being made. Periodically, we'll see Mr. Boswell cycling the recorder on and off. That's simply to say we didn't reply so that we don't lose the recording. The written transcript, once it's available through us, will be posted on our website so that everybody will have a chance to look at it down with that, the full comments. We will end the public hearing today at the earlier of either when everybody has finished speaking or at 5:00. Women close the public clock at 8:00, so we will close in the public commentary at 5:00. So, with that said, we will move on. The first, and then obviously the speakers would you please come to the podium in the time speaking for the microphone or microphones to appear. So then we will. First up is Leslie Rubio and the second speaker will be Reverend Alek.
Twenty clinics in Virginia are in jeopardy of closing their doors. These clinics provide preventative reproductive healthcare services including life-saving cancer screens, family planning, the STI testing and treatment as well as abortion. Forcing these clinics to close will have a devastating effect on women, but will disproportionately affect women at the primary level, young women and Virginia students who do not have access to healthcare. These regulations are the harshest in the United States and their intention is not to protect women at all. If in fact the law was aimed at increasing the level of care at outpatient surgical centers, why are not all centers being targeted that perform any kind of invasive procedure? This is an incestuous and collaborative attack by the Attorney General Matt Cobb and Victoria Cobb on legally, on a legally protected right, Reddeway, ranks 1972, for women to have an abortion. Virginia's Attorney General has stated the purpose of travel laws are to make abortion disappear in Virginia. He then warned the Board that the state of Virginia would not represent recovery where legal fees. The Attorney General, Governor McDonald, Matt and Victoria Cobb are forcing their personal and ideological views about abortion into politics and are to import help. There is not a state document nor is it written in Virginia's constitution that the Attorney General has the power to create, reform or abolish laws or regulations. He does not have the authority or the power to be under the law of the Board of Health. Preproductive healthcare facilities in Virginia have been offering comprehensive healthcare to women for almost four years and there have been no violations of safety concerns during that time. Is the Board of Health prepared to accept responsibility for their part in making abortion unsafe and inaccessible and rescinding preventive care for women in Virginia? James Madison said, "I believe there are more instances of the abridgement of the freedom of the people by gradual and silent infringements of that is empowered than by violent and sudden usurpations."
Thank you. Maggie, that is, all right.
I am a advocate of the rights of women in Virginia and I understand this. I want to say that the legal regulations are signed by the Governor, by best interest of women's health, in potential to avail themselves of these services and helps in emergency situations, which this time we don't plead our best to in the event of abortion of the facilities. We support what the Governor's done, we support the regulations as have been done by the Health Department and ask that you continue to keep using these.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Marty Disney of Richmond City and I'm representing the Virginia Society for Human Life. The Virginia Society for Human Life strongly supports the Virginia Board of Health term regulation on the facilities that perform first trimester abortion. The women of Virginia deserve nothing better than the strongest health and safety standard possible for their protection and safety and health. Thank you and we ask that you maintain these regulations.
Thank you. Yarmoski. Yarmoski. And next up will be Diane Reynolds.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Elaine Yarmoski. I represent NARAL Portraits Virginia and our 12,000 members across the Commonwealth. For nearly two years, NARAL Portraits Virginia has worked with a group of women's healthcare providers at advocacy organizations and passionate Virginia activists to help ensure that newly drafted regulations to be imposed upon first trimester abortion providers are based on sound science and medical evidence. Unfortunately, politics tend to rule the day and despite hearing from thousands of Virginians expressing their outrage about the politicization of these regulatory processes and our best efforts to work with the administration and the Board of Health, regulations are being pushed through without consideration of the advice of medical experts for evidence of the real impact on women's health and safety. The implications of these regulations are enormous. Today, 85% of Virginia's counties do not have an abortion provider. Tomorrow, 100% of the Commonwealth's counties and cities may have no abortion provider or independent women's health center that offers a full range of reproductive healthcare options. The regulations passed in September by the Board of Health are scheduled to go into effect this spring. They could virtually eradicate women's reproductive health care centers around the state. They could leave tens of thousands of women, particularly vulnerable women, without safe, affordable and accessible healthcare and yes, they could put women's lives at risk. Abortion is one of the safest medical procedures performed in Virginia and across the country. The care being provided at our 20 first trimester abortion providers is safe and effective. All 20 have been inspected and given unconditional licenses. I'm here today to request that you adhere to medical advice and grandfather in the state's top-notch abortion providers in having to meet 2010 requirements for new hospitals. I know that everyone here probably holds their own ideas and opinions about abortion, but I hope that the Board of Health will draw on the medical and health expertise that has been presented to you today when considering how tough these regulations should grow and the long-term impact they will have on women in Virginia. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Brean, and I am the Director of the Women's Rights Project at the ECLU of Virginia. I'm here today to stress that the law does not give the Attorney General's office veto power over the Board's policy decisions about what to include in the final rules. There is no credible legal basis for the AG's assertion that the Board does not have the authority to grandfather in existing women's healthcare centers. By threatening to refuse to certify the regulations, the AG essentially has claimed veto power over the Board's policy decisions, a threat that is intended to force the Board to rewrite the rules to suit the AG's policy objectives. That is not the AG's job however. Moreover, the AG is wrong on the law. There is nothing in the code or the recently enacted Senate Bill 924 that requires the Board to impose extensive burdens from construction requirements that have no relation to the safety of the services that women's health centers provide. This is particularly clear since the AG's forced interpretation of the law in this instance is at odds with every other regulation of healthcare facilities and far from consistent with prior interpretations of the law at issue. This bears repeating. Neither Senate Bill 924 nor any provision of existing state law requires the Board to apply the current version of the guidelines to existing facilities. Virginia's Administrative Process Act grants the Board the authority to reject the AG's assertions and continue to vote in favor of grandfathering in existing facilities. While the AG may then continue to refuse to certify regulations by grandfather, the Board is not then bound because of the AG's refusal to certify to change their vote. While the regulatory process may then stall as a result of the AG's refusal to certify, the Board has the authority and the statutory obligation to create regulations for healthcare facilities that conform solely to the standards established by medical and health professionals. Thank you.
And next up will be, Sianthe Stewart-Reed.
The proposed regulations under consideration today are not based upon medical assessing. The regulations have been developed by people of a deep personal religious belief of closing abortion. Those advocating these regulations note that banning abortion outright is unconstitutional, so they found other means for undermining the law. These regulations are one example of this tactic. Of course, I'm stating the obvious, but testimony that people here did have will attempt to justify the need for these new regulations through examples of conditions inside Virginia clinics that provide abortion services. What will not be used is the fact that the conditions reported upon are no different than those reported in other ambulatory care centers. The arguments of those advocating these regulations are constructive to distract us from the disputable fact that these unnecessary proposed regulations are based upon religious bias against a woman's autonomy over her body. Our constitution guarantees freedom to practice the religion of one's choice, but it does not allow one to impose that religious doctrine upon the entire population. When you allow religious doctrine to guide the regulatory process, you threaten the legitimacy of this Board. I urge the Board of Health to defend the Constitution and strike down these false regulations which are based upon religious prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Graham.
Sianthe Stewart-Reed, Planned Parenthood Advocates of Virginia. Planned Parenthood Advocates of Virginia is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization representing the seven Planned Parenthood health centers here in Virginia. We serve more than 23,000 women. Every year, we provide birth cancer screening, birth control, STI screening, well-women exams, family planning and safe and legal abortion. As a representative here of all of our centers, which includes the medical professionals who practice there, who hold themselves to the highest standard of care, I implore the Board to reconsider these regulations again before approval. At Planned Parenthood Advocates of Virginia, we aren't against regulation. However, we are against these onerous medically unnecessary regulations as written and so is this Board. As evidenced by the Board's decision earlier last year to grandfather in existing clinics because the guidelines being applied were only meant for new construction, not existing facilities. It is well within the Board's authority to reject these regulations as written and listen to the expert opinion of fellow clinicians and professionals in their field who will testify here today who indicate that these regulations are unnecessary. My final draw to the Board of Health is that it's never too late to do the right thing. Thank you.
I'm here just as a woman of Virginia and want to point out that there are a lot of women who would like to be able to be here and make testimony in support of the other speakers who have underscored the fact that the regulations are not geared towards women's safety and health, but rather are architectural renovations that require hundreds of thousands of dollars to complete. And not only is it not a matter of making it safer for women, it actually makes the safety of women who rely on these clinics for screening procedures, to treat certain diseases, to get birth control, that more scarce, less available. So I would ask the Board to please push back against the pressure that they have had from the Attorney General, who is currently on a book tour, and I find it ironic that the book is titled "The Last Line of Defense" because the Board of Health will be the last line of defense for many women who rely on the services that these clinics provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I live in Fairfax, but I was born and raised in southwest Virginia. My father was the hospital administrator that opened Montgomery County Hospital back in 1971. What we're talking about here is not regulations that make it safer to get an abortion. It's an ideological and it's a political move, much like our voter ID laws, if we're designed to solve a problem that does not actually exist. There had not been numerous reports of ill effects from women having abortions in the 20 abortion clinic under discussion. But if you want women to go to hospitals, you will find men hospitals because back before 1972, that's when the women ended up who tried to perform abortions on themselves or put themselves under the auspices of somebody who was not a medical care provider. A hundred years ago, women marched in order to get the right to vote. A hundred years ago, they were put in the Aqua Point Workhouse, not that far up the road from here, because they had the audacity to ask for the right to vote. That's less than a hundred years ago. Well, here in Virginia, we are not going to go backwards and allow someone else to tell women that our only option is to operate under the auspices of an ideological and a religiously motivated restrictions on the services that can be performed here. You're not giving the women of Virginia a service. In Mississippi, they have one abortion clinic looking at the rate of teenage pregnancy and poverty. Arkansas yesterday voted to put in the most restrictive abortion restrictions in the history in violation of the U.S. Constitution. These were people, representatives who took an oath of office to uphold the U.S. Constitution and yesterday, these elected representatives turned their back on the U.S. Constitution. Well, Virginia is not Mississippi and Virginia is not Arkansas. We operate under the rule of law in Virginia and Roe v. Wade guarantees women access to services that include abortion. Thank you.
Margaret.
My name is Catherine Maudell. I'm a former Maudell Virginia hospital advocate and president of the Women's Strike Force. Prior to the new regulations, abortion clinics were regulated as physician offices. And such as today, plastic surgery, oral surgery and colonoscopy is continued to be performed in physicians' offices. That doesn't make any sense that a colonoscopy, where an invasive procedure where the patient is anesthetized, is performed in a physician's office, but a first trimester abortion has to be performed in a hospital setting? Why are the Board members angry? I don't understand why they're not angry at being caught in a position of playing politics on behalf of McDonald, Baldwin, who pretends to be a moderate, who actually is the tired vote on this clinic regulation bill and Kucinelli, they're playing politics with women's lives. It is my hope that the Board members will take another good hard look at the regulations before they make them permanent and understand the consequences of their actions. Today abortion is safe and legal. The decision that they are making can very well force women back to unsafe, back alley abortions, back to the days when women died. Now, are they willing to have that on their conscience?
Thank you. These regulations are intended to close clinics, thereby restricting access and eliminating choice by demanding cost prohibitive architectural and structural changes from 2010 Construction Bill, which clearly states they're intended only for new construction of hospitals. And those would be real hospitals, not clinics defined as hospitals in a single paragraph amendment that was questionably deranged to be otherwise innocuous though. They are by passing legislative process which has historically kept legislation with similar intent from passing, including SB 146 in 2004 and SBA 39 in 2005, both of which Ken Kucinelli was the leader. These regulations are targeted at abortion clinics despite first trimester abortion being one of the safest medical procedures. Much safer the procedures performed at non-regulated, non-targeted clinics such as colonoscopy and plastic surgery. There is no scientific-based evidence that these are necessary. The experts on the Board voted correctly and based on evidence-based medicine in June when they grandfathered in existing clinics. The Attorney General overstepped his legal and professional authority by refusing to certify those proved regulations, in effect vetoing the experts' decision. He overstepped ethical boundaries by threatening the Board to withhold legal representation. Everything about this crusade, and that's just what it is by the Attorney General, is motivated by his personal dislike for abortion and voiced intent to eliminate it and is distinctly not in the best interest of women. Closing the clinics which provide safe legal abortion means no access to safe legal abortions. We know from history that when that occurs, women suffer and women die. It is not too late to do the right thing. I ask the Board to grandfather in existing clinics and refuse to vote for any regulations that don't include that amendment.
Thank you.
With esteemed members of the Board of Health, with respected senior leaders of the Department of Health and the Office of Licenseur and Certification staff for their thoughtful ongoing approach to their responsibilities in development and implementation of the abortion facility regulations as directed by the General Assembly of Governor McDonald. I also recognize the significant work that abortion facilities have undertaken to participate in the licensure process and ultimately in demonstrating the Board's safe care for women. As we now approach finalization of the permanent regulations, I respectfully offer three considerations for your deliberation. I will first address the section of Virginia Code 32.1, 127.001, applicable to building standards for abortion facilities. In the interest of time, we'll only read one part, dot, 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 consistent with the current edition of the guidelines for design and construction. OLC staff continuously work with healthcare architects and facilities during healthcare facility licensure processes to ensure lawful application of the guidelines referenced above. These facilities include Virginia's inpatient hospitals, nursing homes and outpatient hospitals, places where all Virginians have surgeries, deliver babies, receive complex medical care from heart attacks to life-saving transplant surgeries. And when they and their loved one walk through the door of that hospital, they trust and rely on the Board of Health, the Commissioner and ultimately the OLC inspectors to provide professional evaluation inspections and supervision. The federal government through CMS Medicare contracts trusts this highly trained professional staff. While I'm not a legal expert, I have concern that the change of the language and consistently to comply with. But I realize that both of these phrases ultimately depend on the integrity of lawful application of the construction guidelines. The dictionary defines a guideline as a detailed plan or explanation to guide human setting standards for determining course of action. In my practice of emergency medicine, I both developed and incorporate guidelines into my daily practice. In fact, examples include those for immunizations, treatment of shock and care of severely injured children. Their use helped my team and me save countless lives. But inappropriate rigid adherence to construction guidelines in any setting can at times have devastating consequences. For all healthcare facilities, including abortion facilities, rigidity and interpretation will potentially decrease access to safe and quality care. I know each of you on the Board, your professions, also encounter guidelines and thoughtfully apply them in your place of work. As the dictionary definition states, as you know from your work and is explained in the first chapter of the construction guidelines for construction, they are just that, recommendations to be used in rebuilding and renovation of healthcare facilities. In medicine, we use a tiered system to evaluate guidelines. I suggest a careful review of these guidelines with implementation of only those that are critical for health and safety for existing facilities and appropriate application of the remainder when significant renovation and rebuilding occurs. Currently around the Commonwealth, hospitals and nursing homes are operating abortions by hospitals, not meeting the proposed building requirements. Rooms that may be smaller there to living safe and effective care, they renovate based on continuity and safety, incorporation of guidelines and advice from healthcare architects and finance available. I urge you to retain that consistent with language aligned with the language of the Code of Virginia. Lastly, I also encourage you to request and receive clarity on what process will unfold if the permanent regulatory process is not completed prior expiration of emergency regulations. Understanding how the situation with other regulatory actions has been handled historically and taking a consistent approach will provide clarity and transparency to all. These three issues address what I think of as approaching these regulations from the Virginia way, balancing the promotion of safety and quality care in a context of application of these regulations that rely on evidence and professionalism without overreaching interpretations that exceed the code language. Thank you for ongoing thoughtful deliberations for the members.
Fortunately, I am one's for grief, so that's why I'm able to be here today, whereas most people don't have that luxury. So, these regulations are unnecessary and are designed to infringe upon our rights to abortion. No one here is saying that abortion should be a safe procedure because it presents a clean, safe environment. If women don't have access to these facilities anymore, they will return to the death of the methods used before Roe versus Wade. Nobody here wants to find out, take it a call, say that, hey, their wife, their daughter, their sister, their friend has bled out on their bathroom floor when they should try to stop the wars. They also need to consider the effects and dangers of that most. Most women don't have the ability to get up and pick up and travel to make and find somewhere that provides safe abortions anymore. Well, the women will always be able to have that access, but women of working class and women who are of color, most likely are not going to be able to have access to safe abortion anymore. But really, I think we need to address why people are so against abortion right now to begin with. So you need to ask yourself why, why you're doing this and why you're pushing for this. So if you ask yourself, hey, is there a religious reason? Then if it is, you need to recognize that people have different beliefs than you and there's no reason you should be pushing your beliefs on to everyone else in the state or in the country as people are trying to do. Is it because of a political reason? If it is, you should keep in mind that governments fail. They aren't permanent and if you are bad to people, they pull the bell and overthrow the government. So that needs to be kept in mind as well when you keep plucking the people. And if it's morally, you should remember that we're talking about ethics, you're not personal morals and if you can't work ethically, then you shouldn't be allowed to be on this Board and make decisions with people who have different morals than you. So mostly, I think everyone here would agree that women need to be kept safe, but this is not keeping them safe. And if you don't realize that passing these regulations will harm thousands of Virginia women, they don't deserve to be here and hurt disgrace to the state of Virginia.
My name is Ralph Northern. I serve in the State Senate in the 6th District and also I'm a child neurologist at the King Brothers Hospital in Norfolk. As a senator and physician, I have great concerns regarding the precedent trap regulations set for government interventions. As a member of the Senate Health and Education Committee, I listened to the proponent of Senate Bill 924 and they told us it was about safety for women. But interestingly, nobody came forward with any data that showed that our clinics are unsafe, nor did they come up with any data that said that these new regulations would make it any safer, nor were there any healthcare providers that said changes were necessary. To follow the precedents of the trap regulations, it's going to take us back to the free Roe versus Wade days. That is not where Virginia needs to go. It is high that our legislators and policymakers and It is time that our legislators and policymakers and our Attorney General start listening to scientific data, to evidence-based medicine, and not to ignore it. It is time that they listen to experienced healthcare providers, and most importantly, it is time for them to listen to women and to keep the government out of their lives. That is what our women in Virginia deserve. I thank you for your attention, and I urge the Board to reject these regulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elena Armosky, and I'm with N A Ralph Roche's Virginia. I thought the hearing was interesting, I thought we heard a lot from both sides. I think one point that I would like to see particularly stressed, especially leaving this meeting, is we heard a lot about these regulations as necessary for women's health, and the truth of the matter is that these regulations have absolutely nothing to do with women's health. All 28 of our first trimester abortion clinics in Virginia are exemplary and have been unconditionally licensed by the Virginia Department of Health. And that's just so important to stress and remember, all these are licensed, really comprehensive, necessary medical clinics, and they're doing an amazing job caring for the women in Virginia. These regulations have nothing to do with protecting women, but rather are designed to shut, shut these clinics down and really stop abortion. It's no surprise that the people who testified today, that is their agenda, is to close abortion clinics, and that's just something that we're going to continue making obvious and continue urging the Board of Health to do the right thing in grandfathering in clinics, as they did in June.